Seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting order. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence? Here.
Trustee Lawler?
Here.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Here.
Trustee Healy?
Here.
Trustee Katsinas?
Here.
Oh, I thought it was her. Trustee Mulaney?
Here.
Mayor Dodge?
Here.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the November 3rd, 2025, regular meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
I move to approve the minutes of the regular, minutes of the Board of Trustees meeting of November 3rd, 2025.
Second.
Is a motion a second, any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Mulaney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Proclamations and appointments, advisory appointments.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
I move to consent the appointments by President Dodge as fully referenced below. Recreation Programming Advisory Board, Arts Commission, AI and Information Technology Advisory Board, Grounds and Recreation Facilities Advisory Board, Senior Citizens Advisory Board.
That's it.
Second.
It's a motion, a second, any comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Mulaney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Proclamation, Experts Breakfast Cafe is Orland Park's Business of the Month, November 2025.
Glad I remember my glasses, you guys want to come up and introduce yourselves briefly? I have a proclamation to read.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody, I'm MJ Sugair, one of the owners of Experts Breakfast Cafe in Orland.
Hi, everybody, my name is Caitlin Wayland, I'm the managing partner at Experts Breakfast and Lunch Cafe.
Well, thank you for what you do, so I have a proclamation I'd like to read. So whereas brothers MJ Sugair, did I say that right? And Hani Sugair have been part of the restaurant industry for more than three decades, beginning their careers as teenagers, helping operate their father's restaurants at the age of 14 and 16. And whereas, Sugair? Sugair? Sugair, perfect. Family have been proud residents of Orland Park since the early 1990s, contributing to the village's growth, community spirit, and business environment for more than 30 years. And whereas, in August 2020, the Sugair brothers officially opened Experts Breakfast Cafe. And whereas, under the leadership of manager partner Caitlin Wayland, who oversees operations with professionalism, creativity, and care, Experts has flourished into a thriving, community-centered establish, establishment, excuse me, that continues to set the standard for modern breakfast dining. And whereas, after celebrating more than five years in business, Experts has continued to grow, becoming busier than ever and widely recognized throughout the region. Its loyal customer base, unique memo, menu, and memorable dining atmosphere have helped establish Experts as a name synonymous with quality, creativity, and consistency. And whereas, Experts has become both a local staple and a regional destination, known for its originality and its reimagining of the breakfast experience through creative dishes such as a homemade filet mignon breakfast egg rolls. We're all probably hungry, you know that. Yeah, yeah, there you go, we're at the address. As well as its signature executive room, a private dining and meeting space offered for an elevated and exclusive experience. And whereas, Experts further elevates the guest experience with a daily selection of fresh break goods, including warm muffins, cinnamon rolls, pastries, and signature complimentary chocolate chip cookies. Very dangerous, very dangerous. Baked in-house seven days a week. And whereas, a strong and engaging digital presence, Experts has shared its story and culinary artistry with thousands online, drawing visitors from across the Chicagoland area, and inspiring many to visit Orland Park to experience its hospitality and vibrant dining scene firsthand. And now, therefore be proclaimed that the mayor and board of trustees on the village of Orland Park hereby recognize Experts Breakfast Cafe as the Business of the Month for November 2025, dated 17 November 2025. Congratulations. Just, is there anything else in the menu you want to highlight for us?
Man, it's a huge menu, I'll be here all night. But definitely everybody needs to stop by, I know a bunch of you guys have been there already. We do fresh appetizers, we pretty much have a homemade coffee shop, fresh roasted coffee shop in-house, nice little private room up front, and we did a nice remodel a few months ago, and it's, it's been pretty nice and pretty busy the last couple of months, which is a good thing.
No, I think that on behalf of the board, we appreciate you investing in Orland and glad you're successful. I guess I'll open it up for the board members, if there's any comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Are you hungry, John?
I am hungry, actually. No, I've been to your restaurant, I think it's wonderful, so keep up the good work, and we'll be back real soon, so congratulations.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
It's a very bright and delightful looking place. In addition, the drinks that you have, those refreshing fruity, all different kind of combination drinks, that's what I like the most.
The drinks, we're at a public meeting and you like the drinks.
Non-alcoholic.
Yeah, I know, I know. We could have some fun. We could have some fun.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lee Platt?
I'm just gonna add that it's a, you know, we like to try all the new breakfast places in Orland every time they come in, or at least new to us, so we've, I mean, I, it's been a few years where I've, you know, enjoyed coming to your restaurants, so thank you for maintaining such good quality and consistency the entire time we've known of you.
The, we have a proclamation, we don't, we didn't frame this because we weren't sure how you'd want to present this, we'll come down and we'll send this to you. It's the cake. Just thought I was gonna be somewhere that you saw, so it's like, stay out of the cake here. Okay, John. Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, excuse me.
Thank you, Orland Park, for choosing Experts Cafe for being Business of the Month. We appreciate all the love and support these last few years.
We are honored to be in Orland Park for five amazing years, and we just celebrated our five-year anniversary. Come check us out at Experts, we have an amazing Moon Cafe, fresh roasted coffee bean smoothies. Come check out some of our amazing items, hope to see you guys soon.
Thank you, all the best, as you go forward.
Orland Park Area Chamber of Commerce Monthly Update.
Well, first, I'm gonna say congratulations to Experts again. I have never been there, so I'm super excited to try it out. My main question now is, do you guys have gluten-free stuff? Okay, I'm there. Well, hello, Mayor Dodge and Board of Trustees. I'm honored to be here once again on behalf of the Orland Park Area Chamber of Commerce. This past month has been both inspiring and very productive, and I'm eager to highlight what we've accomplished and share where we are headed next. On October 22nd, OPAC hosted its monthly membership meeting at the Civic Center with Mayor Dodge as the guest speaker. This event marked a record-breaking turnout for a monthly member gathering with more than 120 attendees. We were excited to see many new faces, and we welcomed three new members into the chamber: Velocity Law, Sailors Training Solutions, and Farmers Insurance. This meeting was exactly what the business community needed. It reflected the collaborative efforts being built between the chamber and the village for the benefit of local businesses. Members had the opportunity to hear directly from leadership, ask questions, and gain insight into what is happening in the community and where it is heading. During the month of October, we surveyed our members to learn what would add more value to their annual membership. Many shared that they like seeing chamber collaborations, especially with the school districts and the village of Orland Park, and want to see more of them. That is exactly what we are doing, and we will continue. Members also expressed interest in educational opportunities, which is why we transitioned our monthly membership meetings into a lunch-and-learn format. This change ensures that every attendee leaves with practical takeaways and October's meeting delivered just that. Our next meeting will take place on November 26th at the Orland Park Public Library at 12:00 PM. Jet's Pizza will sponsor the lunch, and the presenter will discuss the new digital economy and how businesses can best utilize it for growth. To build on this momentum, the chamber is partnering with the village to host a civility and leadership workshop tomorrow at the Civic Center, beginning at 11:00 AM. This initiative reflects our commitment to expanding educational opportunities for our members, and we look forward to continuing to provide programs that deliver real value. The chamber is looking to expand upon its partnerships with our schools. District 230 provides outstanding opportunities for students to explore the world of business. I recently had the opportunity to serve as a judge for DECA, a student organization that equips young leaders with skills for business-related fields like marketing and finance. Students from Andrew, Stanberg, and Stagg High Schools gathered at Moraine Valley Community College to pitch solutions to real community challenges. In one scenario, they role-played as managers of a miniature golf business tasked with supporting their local food bank. Their proposals demonstrated creativity, problem-solving, and a strong sense of civic responsibility. I also participated in mock interviews, which I believe are invaluable. These experiences not only prepare students for future jobs and their careers, but also teach them how to engage in professional, meaningful conversations. Alongside our work with the high schools, the chamber is working with District 135 and nearby middle schools to bring the National Civics Be back to our area. Last year marked Illinois's first collaboration with the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, and OPAC was proud to be one of only 10 chambers selected statewide and the only one in the Chicagoland area. The National Civics Be invites six 7th and 8th grade students to submit essays identifying a community issue, explaining how they would use civics to address it, and outlining who they would partner with, whether it be nonprofits, businesses, elected officials. The top 20 students from the essays, from the essay round, will advance to the local competition where they'll compete for trophies and cash prizes. The top three winners will then move on to the state level, and the state champion will earn a spot at the national competition in Washington DC with the chance to win $100,000. We're excited to bring the National Civics Be back to Orland Park and engage even more schools in our area, knowing these students represent the future of leadership, entrepreneurship, and civic engagement. The chamber and our National Civics Be Committee have set our local competition date to be May 2nd, 2026, and the online portal is now open on the chamber's website for students to submit their essays. Over the past few weeks, we've welcomed several wonderful new members also into the chamber and held ribbon cuttings, one of them being with Northwestern Medicine Living Well Cancer Resources, which newly opened its center inside the current Northwestern Medicine Building on West Avenue. And we also celebrated PF Chang's 20th anniversary in Orland Park, also with a ribbon-cutting ceremony. We're excited to close out the year with even more celebrations, including the upcoming ribbon cutting in early December for the Original Pancake House at its new LaGrange location. Earlier this month, we hosted the Southland Community Expo at Orland Square Mall with nearly 60 vendors showcasing their products and services. This event not only provided a valuable platform for businesses, but also highlighted our strong partnerships with neighboring chambers, including Frankfurt, Mokina, Tinley Park, and Chicago Southland. Members truly appreciate this collaboration, as many belong to multiple chambers and see firsthand how we work together for the common good of business and community development. To close out 2025, the chamber will bring a festive finale to Orland Park, our Ho-Ho Holiday Trolley Bar Crawl on Saturday, December 13th, starting at 5:30 PM. We're partnering with member restaurants, including Coach's Corner, Dave &amp; Buster's, Fatty's Pub, The Irish Patriot, Orland Ale House, and Tommy Teas, to deliver a merry experience that showcases local businesses while bringing the community together. Interest has already been strong, so please mark your calendars and join us for this holiday celebration. So that concludes my report for this evening. I'm truly grateful for the opportunity to speak with you today. Your support means a lot to myself and the chamber board, and I look forward to building on our conversations as we continue working together. And finally, I wish each of you a wonderful and joyful Thanksgiving.
From the board? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for agenda-specific public comment.
Cindy, did you want to go to the board? Just please identify yourselves.
I'm Cindy Tenalia, I live at 6 Old Tammerack Lane. So I was here for the last meeting, and I know the topic of bridal wood was tabled so that the trustees could maybe look into maybe a compromise for a lower density. And so, when I went home, I realized that I'd never seen the plan that the developer had said that they had for R2, where they would have maybe 18 homes, but they said they would have less open area. But, no, the size of the property remains the same, so all that would really mean is that the homeowners would have maybe bigger yards. But I never got to see a plan, you know, just what they said. So I just wonder if you got, any of you got to see the plan for the R2 that they talked about where there would be less open area? Because I thought we tabled it last time so you could go and see if there was a good compromise for a little lower depth. Did anybody? Okay, it's a done deal. Thank you, anyway.
You're welcome, thank you. Next item, please.
Accounts payable, November 4th, 2025 through November 17th, 2025.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
I move to approve the accounts payable, November 4th, 2025 through November 17th, 2025, in the amount of $4,733,632.79.
Second.
It's a motion and a second, any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Mulaney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
We'll proceed to the consent agenda. A, payroll for November 7th, 2025 approval. B, special event permit for Christ Lutheran Church Craft Show, approximately 300 people. C, elevator maintenance service agreement. D, pavement marking dash 2024 through 2026 contract change order number two. E, main pump station pump number four replacement dash RFP 25 dash 062 award. F, a resolution regarding surface transportation program, local funding for the 151st Street resurfacing, 82nd Avenue to Harlem Avenue project. G, a resolution regarding surface transportation program, local funding for the 151st Street resurfacing, 94th Avenue to 82nd Avenue project. H, baseball field lighting at Centennial Park Ball Field number three. I, Sportsplex zoning map amendment dash 11351, 159th Street. J, Hay and Associates, Inc., contract extension number two, landscape architecture and wetland consulting services. K, South Cook County Mosquito Abatement Water Supply Service and Right-of-Way Dedication Agreement.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Mulaney?
Move to approve items A through J of the consent agenda.
Second.
A through J. Motion for items A through J, there's a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Trustee Mulaney?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Okay, proceed to the South Cook County Mosquito Abatement Water Supply Service Right-of-Way Dedication Agreement.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Mulaney?
Move to approve and authorize the execution of agreement titled Water Supply Service and Right-of-Way Dedication Agreement and three plaits of dedications, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review. And I move to adopt a resolution entitled A Resolution Approving Water Supply Services and Right-of-Way Agreement and Accepting 143rd Right-of-Way Plaits of Dedication.
Second.
There's a motion and a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Mulaney?
Just because I wanted to clarify this, to make sure everybody knows what this is and make sure I understand it. So this is, basically the project is, the mosquito abatement property is there, and then there's two private properties. This is basically saying, we're going to take these properties, attach them to our water system. In exchange for doing that, they're going to give us 60 feet of right-of-way that we need to develop 143rd Street when it's widened, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
The mosquito abatement district, Trustee Mulaney, as you recall, November of 23, the board at the time approved an IGA. And so, this is just the next step in order to put that into motion.
So this was something that was already in the works, now we're completing the project. And once they're connected to our water, they're going to be paying non-residential fees, which are higher than residential fees, correct?
That's correct.
So, you know, and they'll also have to comply with the health regulations to make sure that those are taken care of, correct?
Correct.
So this is, you know, just wanted to make sure that I was understanding what we're doing here, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yes.
There's a motion and a second, any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Mulaney?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Proceed to Public Works Memorandum of Understanding between the Village of Orland Park and CTF Illinois for snow and ice removal services for winter 2025 through 2026.
Will entertain a motion before we have a discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I move to approve entering into a memorandum of understanding between the Village of Orland Park and CTF Illinois regarding snow and ice removal services for winter 2025 through 26 as detailed in attached memorandum of understanding and Exhibit A in the amount of $31,950 with a contingency amount of $5,050 for a total not to exceed amount of $37,000 in order for Rich's Moncare to provide snow removal and related services. And authorize the village manager to execute the agreement subject to village attorney review.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, George, just so we can make sure everyone is crystal clear on what this is.
Sure.
And how it all came about in terms of what the township did to the Secretary of State's office. Yeah, so the board is aware that when the newly-elected majority of the township, Orland Township Board abruptly canceled the Secretary of State lease in their building, and then they had 90 days to get out of there. And then fortunately, CTF Illinois, great community organization we have in our community, they stepped up and they provided space for Secretary of State to temporarily relocate their facilities. So, within a span of 90 days, they were able to move their facilities, get them up and running without skipping a beat. If, if we didn't have the, if that option wasn't available, then our, you know, our residents, our seniors, the closest facilities were Methlofee and Joliet or Burbank. So, it's great, it's working real well now, but because of the abruptness, the Secretary of State did not have the opportunity to budget or plan for snow removal services, and CTF is already providing the space for free, for $1. So, just for one year, they've, they've asked for the village's assistance to, for snow and ice and salting operations, and it, we're anticipating that not to exceed 37,000. Of course, it depends on, on snow, you know, what kind of season we have, but that is essentially it.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lee Platt?
So it's not exactly for a year, it's just for one season?
One season, correct, yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
Mr. Mayor, I've got two points to make. The first one is, George, the wording of this motion, or the write-up here, I found it, obnoxiously tilted. You're talking about the Orland Township Board abruptly, you didn't need that word, abruptly, and just unexpectedly, you didn't need those words, those were put in there for that. When I joined the board way back when, I brought it, you know, brought it to attention at that time as a mayor, that the Secretary of State leased these facilities for free from our board, and we were the only people in Illinois not to get rent from the Secretary of State. And I don't know about, I'm from the South Side, we don't like to be taken advantage of like that. No rent for many, many years, in return for some favor from long ago. So I, I applaud the Township Board for kicking them out for not paying the rent. I mean, it's a game that some people are taking advantage of the people of Orland. So I just object to that wording, they should have been tossed down on their ass years ago. And, you know, so that's, that's my thinking about the Secretary of State. Second thing, is that you're asking us to pay 37,000 for snow removal. Have you looked into whether they can afford it?
Secretary of State or CTF?
CTF, the landlord. They're asking us to pay 37,000. So I looked up the 990 for CTF Illinois, and they had, last year they had 127,000 of investment income. Generally, that's a lot, and it's basically because they had a savings account with over $11 million in it at the year end, and other assets. And then, that's not the, the end of it, they had the foundation, which is located there, had another 16 million, so these people have plenty of money. Why aren't they asking us for 31, 37,000? I just don't get it. Plus, we don't do this for anybody else in the village. It's, I think it's preposterous that this seems even on the agenda. It's, I, I don't know how it got started or how it ended up here, I'd like to know. But these people have a lot more money than most of our Orland Park residents. I think it's obnoxious that my neighbor who's out of work has to pay his real estate taxes that they're struggling on, and meanwhile, these people have more money than they know what to do with. They made over $3 million, well collectively, over $4 million revenues over expenses last year. Now they want a $31,000, $37,000 handout from us? I'm appalled by this.
Any other comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
Yes, I concur with Bill's statement, I think the write-up was definitely slanted. They gave them their 90-day notice, how I understand it, as it is under the lease. I think what is slanted here is the fact that the village is going to pay to remove snow on a private property. It shouldn't matter who the tenant is, you know, I guess my question is, too, how many other private properties does Orland Park remove snow from? Joel, do we remove snow from any other private property?
Trustee Katsinas, you'll address the questions to me or George?
I'm sorry, pardon me.
And then we'll address them.
Pardon me, George, if I may ask, how many other private properties?
So, so this is a nonprofit, but we, we, obviously, we do, we have agreements with Metra for snow removal services that help a lot of, a lot of our residents.
Okay, Metra's more of a public parking lot, it's not private property, and that is our agreement with Metra, which And that is our agreement with Metro, which every village has that agreement with Metro. I think this is slanted. I think it's wrong. You know, they made an agreement with the Secretary of State. I think the state has way more money than the village of Orland Park does. And I think to Bill's point, that organization that said welcome, did they not factor that in? And now to say, Orland Park, we need your help. And when you say "they" asked for our assistance, who is the "they"?
Secretary of State.
The Secretary of State asked for Orland Park to plow for them on a building that they're not paying any rent on, that they don't own. Yeah, I think it's absurd. You know, taxpayers, to Bill's point, you know, why don't we start plowing for the schools, for our medical centers, for our churches? Because they all help people too. You have to draw the line. I think this sets a very dangerous precedent. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
So I understand points that Bill and Cindy have made. But at the same time, I just want to say that I, my family, we used the, all, my two daughters and my wife and I all used the Secretary of State last year. And it was convenient, close and local. And I think of the cost that would have taken for me to have to drive over to Joliet or Bridgeview to get services. That would have been four hours of my time, or collectively our time, there and back and waiting in line. And I think about the 20,000 or so residents of Orland that may have used it last year. And we got to quantify the amount of time that matters to them. So it is, it is a government entity. We are paying the taxes no matter what, whether it's in our state income tax or it's our community, you know, real estate tax. Unfortunately, it's got to come from somewhere for a service. Now, if that means that, you know, for one season, because it was changed and that's our opportunity to keep this organization, the DMV in Orland Park for our residents, I think it is a trade-off. I wouldn't do it for more than a year, but because it was short notice, they did give them only 90 days. And as we know, things work in a budget cycle, you know? So it was, you know, all of a sudden, they were told, you got to leave. You know, and I think about all the seniors and everybody else in the community that may have to use the DMV next year, you know, this winter. And I think about the amount of time that they would spend driving all the way over Bridgeview or driving over to, you know, Lockport or Joliet. I mean, that's, that's time and time is value. So as a precedent, I'm not for going beyond one season, but it was a short notice. It is a relationship thing that, you know, sometimes we may ask for help from a state entity and we may, you know, hopefully get it. So it's just about building relationships. It is, you know, not saying that it's not a trivial amount of money, but it is goodwill. And I think that, you know, if the agreement's made by helping them out, hopefully they'll stay and eventually they will pay rent somewhere. And the residents of Orland Park will continue to have, you know, a convenient place to go get their driver's license updated or, or state stickers or whatever it may be. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
I, John, I live on the northeast side of Orland. It's closer to go to Midlothian than it is to this other place. And this place, where it's located now, makes it very convenient for the people in Mokina and Frankfurt and New Lennox, more than it does for the people in Orland Park, in my opinion. So I, again, I don't like to be taken advantage of. And I'd rather go to hell than, you know, do the devil's work. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee, hang on. Trustee Lawler, trustee Maloney, you haven't spoken yet. Go ahead.
So, you know, all of these are very good points. I, I mean, I agree with trustee Lawler. Yes, this is a great service, but let's look at the history of this, right? They were here paying a dollar, virtually rent-free. We were trying to find them a better location. We had a location in mind. We were working towards it. And then in a political stunt, they decided to move over to the Orland Township building and abandon the help that we were trying to give them so they could go over there rent-free. So while they were over there rent-free, were we paying for the snow removal for that in the township? Probably not, right? So let's, let's move them to a new location because now they got kicked out of the township and now they're in another building virtually rent-free. And now the state, who continues to lower LGDF contributions, wants $37,000 to pay for frickin' snow removal? Are you kidding me? I mean, it's, $37,000 is not a big deal. It's the principle. We have the state coming to us begging for $37,000 when they can't give us the millions of dollars we're entitled to because they continue to shrink it. I think that's, that's what I have the problem with here.
Trustee Lawler?
No, I was going to respond. Bill, I understand you live on the northeast and being all the way out on I-80 isn't so convenient for you anymore, but that's kind of the point. Why did it get moved from the Township Center? I mean, it was conveniently located there. So some people will agree with it, some people won't. It's just something in Orland Park. But, you know, I liked it at Township. I thought it was centrally located. And I think it's a important service to have in, in Orland Park. And hopefully they, they will stay in the area.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
For all of the years I've lived here and had access to DMV services in the Village of Orland Park, I have been extremely grateful that I didn't have to go to some of the other communities, which for a number of reasons were less attractive to me, the least of which is maybe saving a few minutes or a few dollars in gas. But in addition to that, I'd like to point out, in case someone isn't aware, that CTF Illinois, George didn't mention, it's a nonprofit. Their mission is to create pathways to joyful, independent living for people with intellectual and development disabilities. They're not millionaires. The funds that they may have on their books helps to take care of people in our community who have much less than most of us do. In addition, they would not need to be plowing the parking lot over in that area because that area is an area that they wouldn't need to use. We're stepping up in a situation where we've been asked to help out another government entity, you know, with a situation going back many, many years where for whatever reason, Orland Park had the benefit of having DMV services in here, possibly only because it was offered free. It may not have been budgeted, we may never have had it. I don't know the exact history, so I can't speak to it. But I think in this situation, it's a good thing for us to do.
Trustee Lee, I think everybody's had a chance to speak. Are there any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lee Platt?
I heard you mention my name. I, I do, I do agree that we need to do the, that it's reasonable for one season to do the snow removal because this is a portion of the building that is offered to our community for our convenience, for a variety of people to use. And so, and everybody knows how winter can be around here. It gets slippery, it gets snowy. So if, you know, our effort to maintain the parking lot of a building that is being made available to our residents for their continued use as we look for a more permanent location is, is a service to our residents who are going to be using that facility and won't have to worry about having to walk through snow or ice to get to the door or, you know, or risk, you know, a fall or whatever else. So, I mean, we live in the Midwest and we have winters. So we have to arrange for snow removal. We have an opportunity here to participate in what was a generous, and it was done in a very short term. There was, I mean, 90 days is not a long time to accomplish that. And so they, and it was done. So I appreciate the cooperation between the state and the village and also between this organization that, you know, as trustee Lawrence pointed out, the whole mission of the organization is to provide care and service to people who need it. And so consistent with their mission, they provided an opportunity for the department, for the, to have a DMV office there for the benefit of the residents of Orland Park.
My understanding is that this is simply, George, to plow the net new area impacted by the Secretary of State's operations?
That's correct.
The temporary facility?
That's correct.
In our town?
Yes.
That came up in a hurry because the township, for their various reasons, made a decision they felt in their best interest.
Correct.
So this is our way of pitching in to keep a valuable service where, if I'm not mistaken, this is on the order of tens of thousands of transactions and visitors a year.
60,000 is what they were doing at Township.
Good to know. Call or roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy? Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Maloney?
No.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Development Services Land Development Code Amendment. Establish certi-bond rating requirements.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Maloney?
Move to approve the Plan Commission Recommended Action Regarding Case Number 2025-0819. And I move to adopt an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Amending the Land Development Code of the Village of Orland Park as amended.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? Call or roll?
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
An ordinance annexing territory pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/7-1-13, which is 10600 167th Street. Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lee Platt?
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Annexing Territory Pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/7-1-13 for 10600 167th Street.
Second.
There's a motion, a second. Any comments or questions? George, before we vote, do you want to give a very brief background on this?
Yes, so there is a parcel that, we have a little PowerPoint here, that is adjacent to the existing, not that one, not that one. There we go. So this, this parcel is adjacent to the existing Panduit. It's, as far as we're know, as far as we are aware, it is still owned by Panduit. It's in unincorporated Orland Park, so, and it is a R4 county zoning. R4 is, in the county is rather extensive. There is a lot that can be developed there. As we've learned through the repo lot matter, I think it's important for the village to look at these potential developments that could occur in Orland Park. So we've followed the process for notifications. We've, we've reached out as well. And so what we're requesting is to go forward with the involuntary annexation for this parcel and then another parcel, the next item.
George, could you or Steve quickly list a few of the things that are allowed in county R4 that we don't want?
Yep. So you got it, Steve?
I have the whole list.
Just a couple of samples.
So you can, you can put a cemetery there, you can put a lot of dense housing, dormitories, schools. R4 in the county is, is very, very, very large and what can be approved.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
George, I'm just, I mentioned to you before, it says that you couldn't contact Panduit. I mean, they're a large employer in our village and it seems amazing we couldn't contact somebody from there. I went there and a half hour later, I had the guy who ran the real estate department, but name, I passed that on, but it, I don't know how that affects passing this annexation tonight. If, I mean, I don't know how good of a job we did. I know you reach out and you go through the motions, but, you know, we're trying to be, attract business here. It can't all be government workers and teachers and everything. We need private industry would help a community go along. And I don't, I hope a company like Panduit, who seems to grow, I don't know if they want to be in Cook County, but they seem to be growing across the country and the world, why we would force an annexation on them and in order to, I'm just afraid of that relationship between us and a big employer in the village. I worry about that by this forced annexation. And I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we at least make one more effort to reach out to them.
There's a motion to table? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion to table and second. Call or roll, please, on the motion to table?
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
No.
Trustee Lawler?
No.
Trustee Lee Platt?
No.
Trustee Maloney?
No.
Mayor Dodge?
No.
Mayor, motion to table fails.
Are there any other questions or comments on the original motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
For clarification, may I ask, George? The Panduit property to the east, that is within the Village of Orland Park?
That's correct.
So it's only the seven-acre property between Panduit and the medical offices on the west side. That's the only property that is Cook County.
Unincorporated.
Unincorporated Orland Park.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
Just a quick question to George. This conversation you had or tried to have with Panduit, did you call them and you haven't heard back or, I mean, we're not privy to the conversation that Bill may be?
So Steve had his staff?
We tried reaching out multiple ways and no one ever contacted us. We sent the regular legal notices to the owners of record, which the attorneys did, and I don't see anyone here either.
And Steve, you also, and I know that Ed also left messages, voice messages.
We tried for a long time to even to identify whether or not we had, there was a, we had heard potentially that the property changed hands. We couldn't confirm that. We've done a lot of research into, trying to contact them, but no one ever got back to us.
And the way we heard about it changing hands is from an Orland Park resident. He was, he was concerned that that was a rumor that was going around and wasn't sure what was happening there.
Did we confirm who, that Panduit definitely owns it through a title search? Or did you confirm that?
So what we do, whenever we, whenever we have to do this, we have to do the last owner on record according to county records.
To the best of our knowledge, Mike, you can correct if I'm wrong, we were not able to confirm that the property did change hands.
I'm sorry.
Mike, go ahead, answer them.
We did our due diligence, did our due diligence. Our staff, our team looked it up and according to the county records, that's who we need to give notice to. We gave every bit of notice. They just didn't respond. This happens often.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Maloney?
Just, just to clarify too, I believe we've been trying to track this down since the end of 2024, correct?
Yeah, we started this process with the communication when?
Yeah, I don't have the exact date, but this property is one of the ones that was identified as something that could be potentially non-residential. I suspect it's residential for tax purposes. I don't know that for sure, but it's surrounded on three sides by industrial, so that's, that's why it's on our radar, wanting to make sure we have control over it.
Yeah, this was part of the study back in 2022.
Exactly, yes.
Any other comments or questions? This, to me, is pretty straightforward. It prevents a use we don't want. There's a motion and a second. Call or roll?
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. An annex, an ordinance annexing territory pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/7-1-13, the following properties, 16881 Wolf Road, 16935 Wolf Road, 16905 Wolf Road, 17001 Wolf Road, 40 West Consola Drive, 50 West Consola Drive, 30 West Consola Drive, 20 West Consola Drive, and 55 West Consola Drive.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Annexing Territory Pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/7-1-13, 16881 Wolf Road, 16935 Wolf Road, 16905 Wolf Road, 17001 Wolf Road, 40 West Consola Drive, 50 West Consola Drive, 30 West Consola Drive, 20 West Consola Drive, 55 West Consola Drive.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Before we have any board comments, George, do you want to give a brief explanation of what we're doing?
Yeah, I'm gonna just queue it up and then Steve will take it from here. But I just wanna, as the board recalls, the village board purchased the 17101 property, the one in blue, which was previously a petitioner had gone to the county planning a repo lot there. So eventually the village purchased that. We've annexed it, which gives us the opportunity then to annex the properties to the north. The 17001 property, immediately to the north of that, a few weeks ago, we received an inquiry, somebody looking to potentially set up a used car lot and repair car facility on that portion. So the plan was always to control the village's destiny better following that repo lot matter. So Steve can talk about the outreach and what we've been doing there.
We have been in contact with the, many of the, representation of many of the owners on Consola Drive. We are extending them the same opportunity that we have other residential areas of offering them a memorandum of understanding. They think we have three outstanding issues that we're still working through. So we will probably have that. If they're gonna move forward with the MOU, it should be presented to the board fairly soon. Those are the residential properties that share a driveway, which is called Consola Drive. It is not an incorporated street or a dedicated street.
Any comments or questions from the board? George, as you and staff and the attorneys go forward with the memo of understanding, I'd like it to be crystal clear what the expectations are about who's doing what, what are the expectations and when, so that we don't have any, for lack of a better word, misunderstandings like we do on 82nd Avenue over on the bike path issues. So let's just make sure that that's very, very clear when you bring back the memo of understanding.
Understood.
All right, there's no other questions? There's a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Proceed to the zoning map amendment for Bridalwood at 14137 108th Avenue.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
I move to approve a zoning map, sorry. I move to approve a zoning map amendment from E1 Estate Residential to R3 Residential for the property located at 14137 108th Avenue regarding case number 2025-09222, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Rezoning Certain Real Estate from E1 Estate Residential District to R3 Residential.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Plaid of subdivision Bridalwood 14137 108th Avenue.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
I move to approve a plaid of subdivision for Bridalwood, subject to the condition that the final copy of the plaid is printed on Mylar and submitted to the village ready for recording at the Cook County Recorder Deeds of Office.
Second.
Motion and a second. Questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Bridalwood Residential Plan Development 14137 108th Avenue.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
I move to approve the Committee of the Whole recommend action regarding case number 2025-0921, also known as Bridalwood Residential Plan Development. And I move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Granting a Special Use with Modifications for a Plan Development and Disturbance of Non-Titled Wetland, Bridalwood-14137 108th Avenue.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments or questions? Call the roll, please.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Recreation and Parks? Centennial Park Soccer Field 1 renovation, ITB 25-026, dash contract termination and bid award.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lee Platt?
I move to approve to authorize the approval and execution of a vendor contract for goods, supplies, and services to be entered into with the second lowest cost qualified and responsive bidder, Summer Landscape LLC for ITB number 25-026 in the amount of $109,800, plus a contingency of $10,980 for a not-to-exceed contract price of $120,780 for the renovation of Centennial Park Soccer Field 1, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review, and authorize the village manager to approve change orders not to exceed the contingency amount.
There's a motion and, there's a motion, excuse me, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Call the roll.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Village Manager Property and Casualty and Workers' Compensation Insurance Renewal.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I move to approve the liability insurance package from Obsidian Specialty, which includes coverage for property in Lynn Marine, general liability, automobile, and umbrella excess liability in the amount of $1,056,155, and workers' compensation for $185,147, crime policy for $3,385, unmanned aircraft liability policy for $26,100, pollution policy for $621, and approve cyber liability coverage by HCC in the amount of $58,679, and authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, George, should we?
Mayor, yeah, thank you, Mayor. So tonight we have Bobby Dufkus here from Marsh McLennan Agency. He's gonna give us a presentation regarding the work.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for having me tonight.
You could just introduce yourself.
Okay. I'm Bobby Dufkus from Marsh McLennan Agency. I'm here to present the property casualty workers' compensation renewal this year. We went to the marketplace to go to the various insurance companies that do underwrite municipalities in the state of Illinois. It proved very fruitful. We approached a handful. Some of them were very interested and provided quotes. Some of them did not, due to various reasons, claims. One particular carrier wanted to conduct loss control. We just didn't have time for that this year, but that's something we will look at next year. If you can just switch the. And here you'll see the premium summary. The expiring premium was $1,447,891. The renewal with the current carriers is $1,667,570. When we went to the market, we, our best option was Obsidian at $1,330,87 total with all the other coverage for a total savings of $337,483. That savings would have been more, but Jim wanted to reinvest some of that savings into increasing the cyber liability coverage from $1 million to $5 million, which was very, very good.
Any comments or questions? Because Mr. Dufkus, if I heard you right, this package, some increased coverage and it saves 300 grand?
$337,000, yes. $483.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
It's the one time of year I get to ask. What's, do you know, or George, do you know the experience rating for how we're doing safety? I mean, how the.
What coverage?
And the workhorse count policy.
You know what, actually the rate decreased this year. So you were, you're doing okay compared to some of our other clients. And the scope and size of Orland Park, you guys are doing pretty well.
Okay.
Can we go, I'm sorry, can we go back one slide? So, Mr. Dufkus and for Jim, it just, it catches my eye that we were declined because unfavorable law history. You know, you never know when an insurance firm's gonna have their actuary say we don't want this in the risk pool. Is there anything that we can learn or do to change that? So there's more people bidding on us in the future?
Yes.
I don't think we're particularly risky, but I would just ask the question, what can we do?
So it's challenging because Orland Park is located in Cook County. And carriers look at Cook County municipalities or public sector in general unfavorably. So in recent years, we have seen carriers scale back on policy limits, increase rates, and increase deductibles. So it's a little more challenging to solidify quotes on behalf of our Cook County clients. So what we try to do is we try to frame our clients in the best positive light. And we work with the, our clients on safety and training and look at their claims on a quarterly basis to make sure that the claims are set correctly and being paid out fairly and with the village approval of all of that. So again, all of that combined, and we present that to the marketplace, it puts a better light.
And I would assume, or correct me if I'm wrong, it's probably more to do with losses in court than necessarily losses per se.
Yeah, yes. I mean, the jury verdicts are high in Cook County, which is why carriers are getting hit pretty hard in Cook County with the venue. But it takes, you know, some of it is severity and frequency. So you can have frequency but have lower paid-out claims and you can have severity. So, you know, we try to hone in on really what the problem is.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Katsinas?
I just wanted to thank the gentleman and his team for doing the research and trying to get the best deal for Orland Park. Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, just appreciate what your, and Marsh McLennan's gone through so.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Call the roll.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Malani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Platt?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment and items relevant to village business.
Is any one of the public in here care to address the board? Okay. Board comments, Trustee Healy?
Mr. Mayor, I looked it up today and I was extremely happy as a, and when you get to, it gets to be my age, you'll understand that when you skip your real estate tax bill and your taxes go down for the Village of Orland, that's a happy, that's a wonderful thing that the previous board had done. They lowered my taxes and I think it's enough to buy a Happy Meal. So, but it makes me happy when your taxes go down. When you get to be retired, you lose your sources of income. You're happy when your taxes do not go up. And I think we should keep in mind that by increasing the taxes, we're making housing and business less affordable for senior citizens as well as for the youth, the young adults who right now are burdened with student loans and that, student loans and job things. But also to, we want people at single-family homes, we want them to buy houses. And by increasing the real estate taxes every year, which most of these bodies do, it makes it more difficult to afford to live in Orland Park for our parents and our children. The, that affordability factor is, often goes right by. We oftentimes are ready to spend other people's money like we saw tonight. And if it had to be for, you know, other people's money, I'm voluntarily paying things out that we don't have to. And conventional business isn't done just because people are nice. And the spending other people's money is very easy to do. I worry that, well, I just know that there's no, that the standard of living here that we have may not always be rising to meet the increases in taxes. So I would just hope, we haven't passed a budget, you know, we haven't passed a final budget yet or whatever, but I'd hope that there is a miracle that we can occur that we will not raise taxes this year. And until we pass that budget, there's always a chance that we will not raise taxes. Thanks.
Trustee Katsinas?
Thank you. As we embark on the holiday season, I want people to consider to shop locally. Please try to support our businesses, our small businesses, and our restaurants. They need our help during this time. Some, in the Christmas season, to many of them, are make it or break it. So support businesses like the one who's the Business of the Month, Egg Expert. Please consider them in addition to our other businesses. It's real easy to go online, hit a couple of buttons, but you think of all the revenue you could generate locally and help our business people. And then on another side note, one thing, the Orland Park Owls, they were telling me they also won third place in floor hockey. So one of the parents wanted to point that out to me. So I told her I would let the public know that. So they won third place in floor hockey. Thank you.
Trustee Malani?
Yeah, thank you. First, I'd like to say congratulations to experts for making the Business of the Month. They really do have great food. Try the shakshuka. It's fantastic. It's my favorite thing on the menu. Also, again, congratulations to the special rec flag football team as they are the 2025 Illinois State Champions. So thank you all to the coaches and the staff that make their programs possible. Thank you, and everybody have a happy Thanksgiving as well.
Trustee Lee Platt?
I just want to wish everybody a happy, safe, a happy and safe Thanksgiving. Hopefully just peaceful and enjoyable and warm and all the things that, you know, we want Thanksgiving to be, including really, a lot of really good food.
Trustee Lawler?
Just want to say a happy Thanksgiving to everybody. I hope you enjoy your families, take a moment to relax. Same to staff for all the hard work you guys have done. And also I look forward to, I think we have a holiday parade kickoff here coming in a couple, a week and a half. So I look forward, hopefully everybody can come out and attend that, so.
Trustee Lawrence?
I'd like to remind those who are listening that you have two more days to drop off cookies for our military troops. We're collecting them in a lot of different places. Village Hall, Sports Flex, the library, Orland Park Health and Fitness, and over at FLC 2. And in addition, going into the cooler weather and enjoying the outdoors this coming weekend, early in the morning on Saturday, we will have the diaper dash. And just after that, the kids' turkey trot. Know that the, there is a small entry fee, but you do get. Know that the, there is a small entry fee, but you do get a T-shirt, all contestants get a T-shirt, and of course, refreshments also. And then one other thing, well, John mentioned the Christmas tree lighting, the ice rink is gonna open up on November 29th, of course, subject to the weather, weather needs to be below 40 degrees for several days in a row for the ice to freeze up, and as John was saying, the Christmas parade and the Christmas tree lighting, that's on Sunday, November 30th, in the late afternoon and in the evening. Come out and enjoys these events, along with, of course, supporting our businesses.
There you go. I think that all the good stuff's been covered, so we'll keep this short. So again, tip of the hat to Owls and, and the rec staff and all the people that are involved in this, and I'm very proud that over the 32 years that I've served the people of Orland Park, Orland Park has always put its resources, well-managed resources, into things like Special Rec, and we're gonna keep doing that. Also, experts, we're gonna make it a special point to reengage with our local businesses and support you in ways that we can, and certainly with the chamber as well, just to make sure that people see that collaboration between the village and the other entities that really give this place its hometown community feel. I think every, a lot of people know Orland Park is a shopping center, but there's 60,000 of us that call it home, and we're gonna keep investing in that. And then with that, just, I hope everybody has a blessed and happy Thanksgiving, and as mentioned, we'll see you at the, see at all the events, I don't want to go back through the entire list, but happy Thanksgiving and good luck to everyone, so thank you. We have an executive session? Need a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leeflet?
I move to go into executive session.
You gotta read it.
Oh, all right.
You just have to jump.
Oh, I move to go into executive session for the discussion of the minutes of closed meetings, the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the village, pending litigation against, affecting, or on behalf of the village, or when found by the board that such action is probable or imminent.
Second. There's a motion and a second, call the roll, please.
Trustee Leeflet?
Aye.
Trustee Milani?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Time is now 8:14.